All right, call the meeting to order. August 4th, 2025 is the date, so I don't get in trouble from Denise. Public comment is first. Anybody have a comment? Please come to the podium.
Yep. Could I make a brief public comment to start?
After I finish, sure. So come to the podium, state your name and address. Have your comments be less than three minutes. Dress your comments to the board and not to the audience. Anybody interested?
Yeah, this is a little bit unusual, but Mr. Benson resigned from the Select Board on Friday afternoon. I had spoken with a former Select Woman previously, Rebecca Hawthorne, who is with us this evening, and unless she's changed her mind, I believe during public comment, she is going to tell the board that she would be willing to return to her old seat on the board until elections, which the board is well within their authority to authorize her to do that.
Any other comments?
Hello. Rebecca Hawthorne, 60 Fox, Garrison Road, Leaninghamshire. Yes, I, Andy, really give it there. I'm happy to come and rejoin the board if it would please the board for me to do that.
Any questions, Mr. Benson?
Absolutely none. I look forward to it.
A different, huh? All right.
All right, let's.
Let's get it before she changes her mind.
Yes. Let's finish with public comments, then we'll do it right after that. Any other public comments? No. So I moved to appoint Rebecca Hawthorne to fill the rest of Dave Benson's term up until the March 2026 election date, effective immediately. She will still have to get sworn in.
Uh, yeah, actually, it does appear the town clerk that has to.
No, no, but they signed it.
Right, right. I second that.
Do you say that?
Yes, I do.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
No, before she changes her mind?
Absolutely.
All those, did anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
There is the signature page.
Good. Congratulations or condolences you can pick, however many you want. So if you can go to the town clerk's office and get sworn in, and then the meeting is what, the 18th? Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. Appointments. Haley Deng Gills, library director. Was it rough at the library? They're ditching you?
I'm just getting beat up all the time. It's terrible. So obviously, I'm here to give my report. So every month, I discuss this with Andy, the Chair of the Trustees. I create a report for the trustees, which is what I gave to you today. I apologize for not getting it to you earlier. I wanted to ask you first if that is, if you're happy to receive the same report that I give to the trustees. It basically talks about the stats of the previous month, any staffing, programming, kids' room, adults' room, technology facility, policies that we review, that we need to review at the trustee meetings, and anything else that is, that we have pressing in the library. So if you're happy to receive the same report that I give to the trustees every month, then I'll gladly send it to you before my report, so that if you do have any questions, that we can, that you have some time to look over it beforehand. And I'm happy to go over it now with you two. I mean, we had nothing to report in the staffing. This month, we didn't meet. I'm making a request to go into non-public at our next meeting. All the programming stats are there, which I won't go into here, but you can obviously see on the front page and on the back page. Technology, we have a senior tech workshop that was introduced, that was, we got a grand fall. That's going really well, and we had some good feedback, and that's ongoing until December. In the facility, Jeff, Public Works, has been working on replacing the placards and the siding at the far side towards the story walk. I believe he's finished with that. We updated the master plan with the trustees that was sent to Karen Rossi on July 30. Judy has done an amazing job working on cleaning out the town hall. We moved the TV as per Bill Booth's request. It was blocking, which we didn't realize, one of the electricity panels, so that was moved. We've pared down all her supplies, which are now being moved into the basement this week. Also working on clearing out the clerk's office. I did a lot of that today, hence the limp. A lot of furniture moved out of there and into the basement. So we're working on, now that the summer reading program's over, we're working back on the building and getting it a little more organized. We have three policies to review. Every month, I like to bring, we have multiple policies at the library, which obviously need annual updates. They are on a three-year cycle, so the ones this month, we'll be doing bulletin board, usage policy, hours of operation, and the exhibit and display policy. And as you may know, we have a survey out right now about the best of you all to the public to see what they would like, what's important to the community when thinking about the best of you. And that is my report for this month, straight past month.
Did they ever do anything? There's a door, maybe Steve can help, but there's a door that they put in, in the threshold.
Yeah, I'll get there.
Okay.
She already took half of the stuff about the library that I was gonna say. I just had to cross it all off.
We're team. It's all good.
Any questions?
No, I think it's a nice job. I do appreciate this very much.
Okay, so are you happy for me to, okay, great. I'll just send out to you, and I send out to the trustees like a week before the, a week before I report. And then if you guys have any questions, we can, I'll be right here.
Thank you.
Steve?
So which one do you want to do first?
Your choice.
Your choice. You got the floor.
That's still a waste oil furnace in the transfer station. Is that backwards? So the waste oil furnace in the transfer station went to get cleaned a week and a half ago with a company that always, has been cleaning it for 20 years, came down to do their annual cleaning, and the fire box in it is cracked, so they condemned it. It's 20 years old, and we've burned some pretty gnarly stuff in it, so 20 years is pretty good. I tried to get prices for a new one. Everything is territorial with these waste oil furnaces, so the company in Massachusetts that sells one can't sell it to me. I have to go with me to get it. The only person who can sell the CE 140 is in Littleton, because we're in their territory. So there's, I can't go out to get multiple prices, because it's just, it's not feasible. But to keep this better, essentially, these are plug and play. We just take the old one down, give it to them, and then get the new one, and we can put it in ourselves. So that's what I would propose we do as far as replacement those. And, you know, if we don't replace it, and we don't, then we can't take waste oil anymore, so we'd have to change the operating plant as part of being able to accept waste oils to be able to burn it. Yeah, we will get $2,500 back from DES for this in a grant. But I can't apply for the grant until I know the cost, or if you're even gonna say yes, so. The CE, the better of the two, so the $9,200 one, is all stainless steel combustion chamber. And it's got a better warranty on it. The other one that's $8,000, it vents out the top, so if we get that one, we would have to put a whole new chimney in and cut the roof to add all that, so the more expensive one fits the current building. Like, we don't have to put a chimney in. It's side vents like the current one we have. So it would just, it'd be a lot more plug and play, so one might be cheaper for the furnace itself, but more money installation-wise, because of extra parts needed to put it in.
Any questions for Steve?
Just, just public information. So, you know, how many gallons do you burn?
A year? We don't, we give more away than we burn.
Really?
We, we can't, we, so if I try to leave it running all summer long and they show up, they'll yell at us because that's not what they're made for, so we keep that back shop where it's at, at 75 degrees all winter long, and they burn when they run, a gallon and a half in hours, but the goal is, and that's about what this one will burn. But it just, it depends on how warm it is, how many times you open the garage door, all that, but, you know, we, I mean, we've given the town a stratom, 1,500 gallons of oil in the last year. And we have looked into getting them for the two highway department buildings, because then if we could do that, excuse me, we'd never have to buy heating oil for those buildings. We'd be able to just heat them off of waste oil furnaces.
So you just burn waste oil, nothing else? Nothing else gets burned in there?
No, we just try, we try to keep it as much waste oil as we can. I mean, some stuff gets in it, which they can burn, but it, it's, we sort of transmission fluid, all that, hydraulic oil, that kind of stuff.
So you don't, you try not to burn that stuff?
No, we can burn that stuff, but some stuff gets contaminated with some gasoline or something like that, and it can burn that.
Chief one? Well, the one that's, yeah. So you're good with the $11,000?
Yes, I am. I think you can do that thing.
All right. So it says coming out of the transfer station, because I don't.
So when I wrote this, I didn't have the financial planning tool in front of me. I'm pretty sure if he looks at the financial planning tool, it's supposed to come out of town buildings, but can't rem, I can't remember. I thought we had moved it. I, I just, I don't remember.
Mr. Tapping, could you help us out?
I know it was in the financial planning tool for 10, so it wasn't that far off.
I could look it up if you give me a minute.
Sure.
But one of the distinctions between whether or not it could come out of either fund, for the transfer station fund, is, is it legitimately transfer station equipment that is used to handle the material that's brought to the transfer station? And the answer is yes. Other furnaces in the building, like heating the office, which doesn't use material that is brought to the transfer station for, would not count as transfer station equipment. So it could come from either, and it'll take me a minute or two to look up.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Steve, there's other things to talk about, so I'll do. We'll put this one on temporary hold. Which one you want to go to next, Mr. Steve?
Well, I'll do the hobo shed.
Yes, it's the tool shed with the hobo drum.
That's right. So Andy had told me you guys wanted to get prices to get the paint on that building taken care of, so I called Haley and asked who they had used to strip the schoolhouse. Separate company that will put the stuff back on. Because when they stripped it, they, they did a really good job, and it was North Ridge out of Epsom, Northwood, up there. He gave me a price originally to scrape it, which came back at $6,500. If you scrape it, there, there's a lot of rotten wood on it. I'm sure we have to start peeling the stuff off, and I think we end up being where we're at now in another 10 years with it peeling off. So I got him to give me a price to just strip it, all of it, right off, and that was $5,800. And then on a piece of paper I handed, you got handed out, because we're probably not gonna have enough time to be able to get all the stuff put back on. The guys that did this building, that stripped all the rot off and then re-signed this building, gave me the price without supplying all the materials and just their labor, was $5,760 to put the siding back on, not paint it. So we're looking at like. Something like that, yep. And that's not, we're not touching the side that has the vault on it, because that side looks like it has been redone at some point already. There's nothing peeling off of it, so I didn't want to touch it. We'll just repaint it.
Is there any thought about doing something about that window? There's a window there, and it's like, needs some, like, attention.
It's glaze, I think, that's fallen out, and all that's asbestos, so, and lead, so that would hopefully be part of them stripping the lead off, and then we'll buy the glaze and re-glaze the windows. We have done some stop block glaze and put it back in, but it just falls back out, so we need to. In this one, both quotes include scraping the red doors, and scraping the red doors is included in both of them.
Question, sorry.
Yeah. Where'd you get the little?
The $58.
Yeah, $58. Just gotta take the clare boards, right?
So it's not both? I thought it was both.
No, 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 no.
No?
No, it's option, option one is 65, option two is 58. Sorry.
Looked like we're applying other clare boards.
And then the other one, the one that says proposal for 5760 would be.
This is the one you just handed out.
Yeah. So that would be to put everything back on.
Yeah, so in those words, take away all the stuff with, all the lumber that has all the lead paint on it.
North Ridge will take all that away, which is.
So you don't have to do anything.
Which is $5,800, and then to put everything back on is $5,760, so it's 58 plus 5760.
Right.
It's both.
It's both. One is to get rid of it all. Yes.
Attack the boards that you're gonna supply.
Yes, which we already have.
So they got a prime of the same thing.
Just wanna make sure.
Oh, you're right, yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Because if we hit it with the lower one, we're gonna make you make up the difference. I don't think you want that.
So where'd you get all the clare boards from?
I bought them at the end of fiscal year, because we had a bunch of money left. And that, those clare boards are what Jeff just put on the library. We had gotten some for the back of the annex. We re-signed that whole back thing and fixed that. So it was gotten for essentially buildings at the center of town.
Time to make it happen?
Huh?
When would this happen?
They would, these companies would be able to do it before winter.
And what are the clare boards?
Double-primed cedar.
Cedar? That will last. And this is scheduled to come out of the town buildings? I don't remember.
I think so. I think it, yeah, I think we'd have to. I don't know if it's scheduled or not at all. I don't know.
I don't believe it was formally scheduled. You've talked about it. In fact, at one point, I think I was tasked with trying to find a grant to put some sort of mural which the grant went to Rochester.
Right. Could give Mr. Tapping a few more minutes. You want to go to your last thing?
Yeah, the departmental update. All right, I was starting the transfer station first. So House Old Hazardous Waste Day is August 23rd. At the Dover Transfer Station, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Fire sprinkler system was completely done last week. They did the final pump test. Everything passed. They are out of there, and the final bill's been submitted to be paid. We are now composting all food ourselves. We do not use Mr. Fox anymore. So we're 100% doing that ourselves.
Where are you composting it?
In the leaving yard waste that we get, so it's all going into one thing, and we're taking temps and making sure it's staying hot enough to decompose everything, and been going pretty good. Chip wanted to do it. We started it like the first of the year, first of January, doing it then a week, and then Mr. Fox would take some just in case it didn't work out, and it worked out well enough. They wanted to keep trying to do it, so.
You're taking loans, too?
Yeah, we can take meat and dairy. They changed the rules two years ago to be able to do that in the state. As of, and residents shouldn't see any difference. There's still a trash can out back. They'll never have seen it. We just empty it.
And you're just gonna have to buy bags for them, or how's that?
No, just hose them out. That, the bags that went in those big cans was, that was a Mr. Fox thing, that they started doing like halfway through. We'll still buy the bags to give to the residents. We'll still do that, yes.
Do you have any idea in terms of how much food waste you're deferring out of MSW?
800 pounds a week, something like that. It's, yeah.
Very good.
We didn't, sorry. Go for it.
Can we put something in the e-car about how much money that's saving?
Yep.
Because that's what, $84 a ton?
Yeah, today, and then next it's gonna go out because of HB2.
So it'd be nice to let people know that they can do this if they want to.
Yes.
But it's saving the town money in terms of deferring that from being transported to turnkey.
Now, we did well enough on last fiscal year's budget. We bought a new open-top dumpster for the second year in a row, which makes it so we don't have to buy it out of the trust fund. Because the budget passed at the state July 1st, HB2 has a trash, a trash surcharge in it at $3.50 a ton for every ton of MSW and C and D that goes into the landfill. It's not just New Hampshire that pays it. Everybody pays it. So in reality, January 1st, our MSW is going up $7.50 a ton from today. The $3.50 we get reimbursed quarterly.
So do we have to submit something?
I submit a paper to DES, and they send us a check back quarterly. In reality, with the amount of trash we're sending to landfills, $4,500, $4,600 a year extra that we have to pay. The good thing about it is it pulls all the solid waste at DES out of general fund and makes it funded by this, and one quarter is enough to fund it for the biennium. And then the money left over goes into 50/50 grants that DES will put out, so they'll, those grants would be available for new balers and a new roll-off truck. It paid 50%, which is, and that's only to New Ham, to municipalities in New Hampshire, so that's, it's good.
Are you able to get, like, what is it, the America Beautiful Grant for that roll-off?
We didn't do that for the roll-off. We got, we did that for some dumpsters. We've done that for the skid steer. But that's a portion or up to five grand, so we have five grand for the capota. And then our activity report, we've done well so far. This fiscal year, this calendar year, we've made on this with the NRA or New Hampshire Recycles, what it's called now, we've done $27,000 in revenue, plus some other places where we sold some things, so we're up around like $33,000 in revenue.
How are recyclables in terms of?
Well, not good.
Not good still?
White iron, $78 a ton. At one point this year was $138, so it's down.
Newspaper?
We're not doing newspaper anymore. We have it. We just put it in with newspaper. We don't get enough to make it worth. So we're trying to figure out something else to put in that bunker to recycle, pull something outside of the waste stream.
Any thoughts, and I think, I don't remember, maybe it's Joe was telling me this. Is there thoughts about changing in terms of what you're recycling? Because you do what, number ones and number twos in plastics?
Yeah, if we did anything, it'd be three through seven, plastic, which doesn't pay a whole lot, but it's not going to landfill, so.
Some of it you're still looking into.
Yeah. And then highway department-wise, we finally got internet at the back shop for the first time ever. In fact, they put a beam that sends it back there, because I didn't want to pay for a second internet feed, so $1,100 to send it back there or pay more than that a year, so. So the mechanic has a laptop back there, Ben Allen, and then we just ordered a truck laptop that'll be here later this week that has all the programs on it for every piece of equipment we have from 2026 on back, so we'll be able to do all our own diagnostics once we get it. So we're kind of coming out of the 19th century, end of the 21st. As far as projects we're working on, we're looking at doing some bridges. As you know, we submitted State Bridge Aid for the bridge by Randy's house. I'm getting a proposal from Streamworks, the company we work with for Packers Falls, to do the pipe by where Ricky lived, which has been talked about for years and years and years. We're looking at that. And then the old mill bridge, doing the other half of the header that got done a couple, before I got here, they, they haven't been able to, it, it never got done, because the state, I think, did that one, and they just don't have the manpower to help I already asked.
The bridge down by Ricky's house, is that the one with?
Well, it's not the bridge. It's the pipe. It's the one you guys wanted to, for a while, it was gonna be a wooden bridge, and then.
But there's some endangered something in it, isn't it?
It's like a muscle in the lamprey, not in the actual creek. The excavator is currently down with a DPF regen issue, which we get the computer, we can fix it. It just has one of those older exhaust filters in it, and it's plugged. You can't force a regen without the computer. You can't. Not like newer ones where you can manually put it in. It doesn't do that. Now, we have started roadside mowing, and then we hired a guy that's gonna come in and do some roadside mowing in another couple months. He's currently in Nottingham doing mowing for them. We got the one ton July 1st. It's at Donovan's for the body now. Yeah, a new round of Volkswagen money came out Friday. So we'll look at that. We're kind of holding off on getting an on-road vehicle and waiting for one that comes out that's off-road so we can go after it for a load of replacement. I don't think it's in good practice to get another new dump truck, and then in 20 years, we're gonna have to replace four of them in seven years, and we're not gonna get lucky, I don't think. The paving got done early. Andy came in under budget. We were able to add Guile Road, so we were able to add a road. Uh, the paving got done early and it came in under budget, we were able to add guile road, so we were able to add a road. And then since Peter retired, we ended up, we had to replace a lot of stuff, we spent a lot of money at the end of last fiscal year on buying tools that we were no longer gonna have access to, which I think we all, it was, that was gonna happen, so we had to buy a welder, we had to buy some some new grinders and, and hand tools and, and stuff like that. Uh, buildings. So like Haley already had told you, we re-sided a big section on the side, the rot under that door got taken care of. And we Thompson's water sealed it the best we could because it had made it. And, but that's done, um, it's all been painted and I'm pretty sure we took the scaffolding down, so that's done. This building, this fall, we're gonna do those white vents there and there. We're just, they're gonna go away and then we're just gonna side them back in.
Is it like what, styrofoam?
It's like styrofoam, we tried to paint them, it just comes right off.
So functionally, you don't need them?
No, there's, they're just there for looks, there's, there's nothing functional about them. I thought they were a big vent until I got up there on a lift and went to go power wash them and tried to clean them and there's just, yeah, they're just solid, there's nothing there. Now, so we're gonna do that and we're gonna start doing some more of the metal wrapped wood around the building. We haven't decided if we want to do, start on the strip that goes around the whole building and put plastic in or do, um, some of the bays on the fire doors. Because the metal falls off of those, we have to go screw them back on and re-nail them, so they're not holding the stuff, so those might be what we do, but that's gonna happen this fall.
Is that something that you need money out of the?
No, I am planning, I'm gonna pay, do that out of operating budget. Yeah, there's new fire alarms now and the transfer station, the highway front building and the annex, those got put in a week and a half ago. Because UNH stopped monitoring, so we had to, to change them over.
Is it the same company that does the rest of the buildings or?
Eastern, yes. One thing that happened at this building, I don't, we never really talked about, but this spring, we had a pretty bad leak in the roof over there, um, because the chimney rotted out, so we had to put a hold, we had to put a hold of chimney from the roof up on and the company that put the roof on this building came out and did it under warranty, which they didn't need to do, so I had to pay for the chimney piece and stuff, but as far as that other part goes, they came and stripped the shingles off and then reshingled it and they did not charge us for it. Um, we seem to have a fairly decent inspection program in the buildings now with Jeff going around with a checklist and checking all the lights and the outlets and stuff, so the problems of a couple of years ago hopefully won't ever happen again. And he's pretty much done that on his own, so that was all him. And that's what I got, unless you have any questions for that part.
Any questions?
No, it's pretty good.
I have two, um, one, how's the cleaning service working, still good?
I think it's okay, but I only see my, they only clean my buildings once a week, so I I come in and it's clean, but I also know what it looked like for an entire week prior. I've had to talk to him a few times, but Andy would be probably the better one to answer that question.
We've, um, actually I had some issues brought to me this morning.
Oh, okay.
When I returned to the office, I'm gonna talk to you about them and we'll
All right, when I say something to them, they get fixed, so we're not
Um, the question is, how is people being able to use credit cards, debit cards at the transfer station to do their?
I mean, they use them, but they only use them like four times a week, so.
So not really that much?
People don't like the fee.
Oh, they don't like the spending?
No, they use the more and more expensive stuff, but a lot of the stuff we do is five dollars and fifteen dollars, they don't want to pay two fifty.
Well, that's how much they charge, two fifty?
They don't want to pay two fifty on a five dollar charge, which I get. But the options, the, the option's there, but I think last week, I, they got you swiped four times. I think last month, they might only got swiped like six total for the entire month.
Why is it so expensive?
Um, it, it's just, there are two organizations involved with it, that set it up, Heartland and the name of the actual
Avenue?
Yeah, Avenue without the E on the head of it. That set up the, the process and the way municipalities work, we can't absorb the fees as a municipality, so they, they charge that as the outside amount.
So it's a different kind of paradigm than what the tax clerk or
I know pretty much the same as what the town clerk and tax clerk use, same company?
Same, what, two point something percent or three percent?
That's a percentage and they're higher amounts, but they have a minimum two dollars and fifty cent
Oh, they do?
So if I go like, if someone brings in two hundred tons or two hundred dollars worth of stuff, that gets charged at the percentage rate. But if it's under a certain amount, they get charged two dollars and fifty cents.
I am genuinely surprised with the number of people that come in and pay their taxes. And in fact, the, the town clerk, well Linda, this is the town clerk and I have talked to people about not using your debit card for convenience because it's gonna cost you several hundred dollars and people just sort of smile and say, oh, I want to run a debit or whatever.
That's their choice, I guess.
I have one other thing to say, I forgot about, but we still are having issues with the water at the center of town. I got a complaint, well, it's not a complaint, she told me that the water was turning brown again and we had to go change the filter, it's only, the filter's only making it three months before they look like just mud coming out of them, so we did change all the filters out again today.
This is from the well that's at the town center behind the
Yeah, and as soon as I turned the water back on, the nice white filter just turned brown as soon as the water hit it, like it's
So is it sucking from the bottom, the dirt that
I have no idea. But it is, it's
Is that a duck well, that's not an artesian?
It's artesian.
It is artesian?
Yeah.
The water table is changing, yeah?
And it changed quick. Because we didn't really have any problems at all and then last summer, they, the water all of a sudden, I had nowhere, just turned brown. It was plugging all the sinks and plugging the valves in the toilets. And that's when we put in, we put in two separate filters, a big pre-filter and then one that's like five microns and it seems to clear it up, but it doesn't clear it up for a long period of time before we have to start changing them again.
So how deep is that well, do you?
No idea.
Do you know where it was put in?
I think it was put in the fifties, sixties maybe?
I have that information, but not, it's not very deep.
Not very deep, yeah.
Ultimately, we're thinking about if we put in something over there, town offices or something, we could put the well in a different place.
Exactly.
We might want to consider, see if we can do that at all.
Yeah, I would hope to look into it.
Cheap, but they're not that expensive either, so.
But the, the other problem with over there is it's high in arsenic, the manganese has gone through the roof and obviously the iron is we water tested it and then compared it to a previous water test and a lot of stuff has gone up.
If we had a replacement, where are we gonna put the well from? I would take it by municipalities over here.
Yeah, it's back, but the thing is, if it's down only, I don't know how many feet, if you go down even further.
I just, we're still, it's, no, nothing's changed, it's been exactly the same for a year, but like we're, it's still not good. I mean, even with our filters, I still think it's stained stuff, they have so many blue tablets in their toilet over there to stop it from because you just, you get the, you get the ring because of how hard the water is and
Would you be amiable for us to ask Steve to get a quote in terms of how much it costs to put in a well in the line that would go into the library?
I think it's a good idea.
It has to go into the annex.
Has to go?
Unless you want to move everything out of the annex into the library.
Because I think ultimately
And we just We just put a whole bunch of new stuff in the annex, but I mean, I, I get it, but that's where everything goes now is
Because ultimately, that's where
Um, and ultimately, if you do that,
Yeah.
we can shut that building off and not heat it in the, in the winter. Because the only reason it's currently heated is because that's where the well trough and everything is. Let's move forward.
So can we ask you to get a quote? Because I think if you check with Mr. Tappin, we have an approximate place that we think it would fit. So if you can get from him, so you can pass that on to the contractor, whoever it happens to be, in terms of what the general cost would be for one drilling an artesian there and doing the water line over to the library.
Which is, this is probably a good time to do it because I don't know where they're putting the, the stuff for the solar that they're putting on the roof of the library, we don't want to put a battery on top of where the well was supposed to go or vice versa, so.
We're just exploring.
And I'm assuming the well project is gonna be expensive enough so you can get a quote or get quotes, but we would want to RFP that.
Oh yeah, I'd go out the bid for it, I just want to know kind of what I'm looking at money-wise.
Well, you're paying for operational expenses that hopefully this would probably fix. So you guys don't have to change filters so often, you don't have the blue ring, what is it? Whatever the ring is.
Brown ring.
Brown ring, sorry.
I mean, it was so bad before we put the filters in, when you turn the water on to wash your hands, like it was the color of these tables, it was I think I showed you the water model that I had at one point full of it, so.
And you guys don't drink that, right?
We don't drink it, but unfortunately, we do, without thinking, we wash food in it or used to wash, we don't anymore, but you can't wash, you can barely wash your hands in it.
Yeah, we put non-podable signs on all the six
Which is
at the center of town.
For the town of Lea.
No.
Let's move forward.
Let's move forward, that'll be great. So if you, uh, I think Mr. Tappin might be able to tell you approximately where it is, just to give the contractor an idea in terms of what that is. Anything else for Steve?
Well, I have one other thing, I have, um, money in part-time repay and I was hoping to be able to get a extremely seasonal guy to cut grass for us and possibly do some snow plowing in the in the winter, so I was just looking for your blessing on that.
If it's within budget, I'm fine.
It's your budget, so yeah, if you think you can afford it?
Yeah, he's, he just retired from the state, his twenty-eight days are up, so he's got his CEO deal applied, he can mow.
Okay, good, thank you. Don't worry about
All right, well, we gotta do it.
Yeah, you gotta do a whole bunch of stuff.
Questions?
The subject you were just talking about, the well, um, I'm assuming that you do know that the well doesn't meet state requirements, it's for its location?
The current one?
The current well?
Yes.
Because it's, uh, how close it is to the parking lot and how close it is to
Yeah.
septic systems.
Well, that, that's why I think kill a couple of birds, not that I want to kill birds. That we can put in that particular well, which could solve some problems that we have, but also make it compliant, because right now it's not.
Uh, so, um, taking the previous questions in reverse order, um, about the tool shed, in the FPT under town buildings, uh, there are two items. Uh, the first is paint tool shed with lead abatement. And the estimate in twenty-twenty-two was twenty-five thousand dollars and it was planned to be done in twenty-twenty-seven. And there is also a replaced tool shed roof um, with a seventy-seven hundred dollar estimate in twenty-twenty-two, with it planned to be done in twenty-twenty-seven.
It's currently not leaking.
So
It's a metal
Currently not leaking, but every roof we have is currently not leaking, so.
But it's in there, it's in there in town buildings?
It's in there in town buildings, um, and it was estimated at twenty-five thousand and the future estimate for in twenty-twenty-seven was thirty-one thousand with the escalation. And your other question was about the, um, transfer station, um, and
Waste oil?
Waste oil heater, um, and that is also listed under town buildings, it was. With a twenty-twenty-two estimate of ten thousand dollars, um, and planned to be replaced in twenty-twenty-eight. But because it's broken, you can't put that off. Um, the, with escalation, the twenty-twenty-eight cost was expected to be twelve thousand nine hundred.
Close.
And as I did point out, it really is a select board's call as to whether you want that to come out of that fund or, um, because it is, um, being used for material that's brought to the transfer station to handle that material, it could be considered transfer station equipment.
Hey, thoughts, I'm inclined just to take a
Town building.
All right.
I think it's clean.
Thank you, Mr. Tappin. Did you have something else or?
No.
No, you're good?
Yeah.
All right, so waste oil, I moved to authorize public purse director to purchase a new oil waste furnace from Arrow Equipment in the mountain, not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, said funds to come from town buildings capital reserve fund, do you have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? I'm sorry?
Sorry, I thought we were going with transfer station.
No, you're not. No discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes? All right. Moved to grant the town administrator permission to contract with Northridge Contract Incorporated to renovate the outside of the whole shed located at the town center, for a amount not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Said funds to come from the town buildings capital reserve fund, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Steve.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Administrator, get your
Sure, um, the first item I have, uh, is a potential meeting with the library trustees. I had talked with, I think each of you individually, often over the last couple of weeks, but, um, in talking, um, with the library trustees, they would like to meet with the board to talk about plans for moving forward with continuing the renovation or finalizing the renovation of the library project, um, and what I'm going to propose to the board is that you do that either in a regular select board meeting or it may be an unpublic, um, session at the end of a select board meeting. See if the board was agreeable to, uh, scheduling that.
Thoughts?
Select board meeting, I have no problem with that, I don't know if there's anything that's not in public at this point.
I, I don't think there is, but
So let's go ahead and schedule it.
Maybe the next meeting, eighteen?
How long does it take?
I don't, but I can talk to Annie and get an estimate. Uh, the second thing I had was the code policy, uh, this was per the last meeting, um, I essentially presented this in the fall, I took out some of the language that the board at that point found objectionable. Uh, it basically gives the board the ability to not include new hires or employees that they have recently adjusted their wages upwards significantly, um, from the call-up. Yeah, my two.
Is this the final?
No, this is the
This is a draft for you to
Draft for you to review, so if you like this, I will bring you back.
It's a question. This is my paper.
I'm not telling you where I get my paper from.
Yes, we don't really make a paper from, that's why they have a financial difficulties for that.
Just have to do it.
Great, thank you. The public safety complex, uh, room use application from a new Girl Scout troop, um, was included, that typically the board has approved, which nonprofit groups and community groups can use the meeting rooms upstairs and downstairs, they were looking for the downstairs, uh, room, I believe this is the third Girl Scout troop that we have in.
Oh, yeah.
We know.
So this is the Girl Scouts of the Green Mountains, that's Vermont. So you're shipping them in, or what's, what's the?
That's the umbrella organization, they are a local B-based Girl Scout troop.
All right, but it's serving residents of the town of Me?
It is.
All right, and they can provide their insurance. I don't see us as being on that particular
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, she gave us just a sample.
Well, this was supposed to be it, she should have put us down.
As an additional insured.
So I'm okay with it, as long as this gets updated with the town authority.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you need to vote on that or anything?
It would probably be a good idea, yes.
So, um, I moved to approve the use So, I move to approve the use of women. These are not constricting with anything else we've got going on already, right, the dates?
She met with Denise and went over the-
So like election day or anything like that?
No, these are all Fridays.
Oh, they're all Fridays? Nobody's here anyway.
And we tell them that anything like election or need for a town meeting takes precedent over whatever we agreed to.
As long as they understand that, alright. So I move to give approval to the troop 64170, Girl Scouts of the Green Mountains Service Unit 216, permission to use the public safety complex as long as their certificate of liability insurance lists us as a holder. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
None, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I had a couple of miscellaneous things that I wanted to run by the board, one is good news. Furnace at the town office worked miserably on one half of the building over this past winter and was judged dead late this spring. So I talked with Mr. Daly, the owner of the building, and said that, you know, as I read this lease, once I have made a certain number of attempts to repair, it's up to you to replace, despite the fact that the lease pretty much puts everything on us, and Jim agreed, so. They are going to replace the HVAC unit that does the town clerk administrative side of the building up starting next week, so.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, that will save us on order of $12,000.
Staff inconvenience and stuff like that, so.
I know, the, the temperature in, in the town administrator's office, for example, got down to 39 degrees last winter. I'm making a couple of predictions, so.
Yeah, I'm well asleep.
Other items, the library trustees have met with regard to the solar battery and solar panel project. They have chosen solar 603, which I think after looking at those contracts was a really wise choice. I have sent them a notice of intent to award letter and I believe I've got a copy of the contract and agreement back. Mark Nelson, Steve Bullock and I, we're going to just go through it, make sure it made sense to everybody and Mr. Bullock, as you expressed tonight, is interested in primarily the battery replacement, where they envision putting that. But that will be moving forward. Two other items, typically the A B C gets rolling in August and we are, there are a couple of members on the A B C, I'm, there's not a chair, so to speak, at present. And I'm not sure what the board would like me to do, I-
We still have the thing in the ad, we've got Bambi's certificate on there, right? He's kind of missing. Isn't he get, he was like a write-in or something?
He was a write-in, yes. He apparently has not been sworn in.
He didn't accept that, he did accept trustees at trust.
That's why he wasn't there.
People, you stole them from us.
Yes.
So who do we got on there now?
Right now, we have yourself, Pat Barber, Eric Johnson, and it looks like Tom Burdock is still on there.
So you need two more, at least.
Two more people.
Sure, you've got, you've got a quorum, I believe, so you could have an organizational meeting.
Well, I know Rebecca's been interested in joining things, maybe.
You only have one select board member.
Just kidding, just kidding.
On the board at a time.
Alright, so.
Was there any past select people?
Oh, you've got Sherry Brown, Clay Barney's not built up yet. Who else?
Katrin.
Katrin?
You can ask Katrin.
I need, I can ask- I find my space on his name. The old elk guy.
Griswold.
Oh, Jim.
Jim Griswold, yes.
I have not talked to Jim.
Who else? Oh, um. Find my space on his name. Listen, Fox Garrison, next to you.
Dave Stier.
Derek, there you go. Thank you, thank you very much.
I, um-
He just resigned from C I P, so I'm-
Well, then he's got nothing else to do, so he can't-
Who just retired, anybody float around there?
Tom Quigley.
Peter Hoyt?
Tom Quigley's not going to be the moderator, but he can be the moderator in the A B C at the same time, I think he can.
I think he can, yeah. Particularly where it's an A B C, as opposed to an M B C. And I can ask Peter as well, Peter has expressed-
Oh, Peter Hoyt, yeah.
So there's some opportunities. Peter is going to be gone for the next several weeks, month, yeah, so he wouldn't be available for an August.
Yeah, well, see if you can find somebody, yeah.
We've been trying, but I just, typically we get rolling in August, so.
It's hard to get people to volunteer to do things these days, so.
Which brings me to my next topic. Months ago, we talked about our volunteer of the year search.
Oh, you're jumping ahead, aren't you?
We talked about, oh, I didn't realize-
Yep, yep.
-our own business, but that's just something for the board to consider, we had talked about possibly doing ice cream social. I think we agreed to put it off in May or June, we said we would put it off to the beginning of July and-
We picked somebody, didn't we?
Yes. That ship has sailed, so.
Maybe we should do that. Well, once, the fire department has their ice cream social in August, when?
They're doing, August 20th, they're doing the ice cream social at the family night.
At the family night, correct, yeah.
Maybe we can do it.
The family, yeah, that would be a nice time, right?
Yeah, you'll have to do it, I can't go.
Do what?
A presentation, the family presentation.
Oh, oh.
We could build a little stage on a picnic table.
No, we get John to stand in the back of his pickup and then-
Anything, go, you can go. We do have a megaphone, electric one, so.
No.
Oh, yeah.
So why don't we do that, do we have the appropriate plaque and stuff?
No, not yet, but we're getting, I think so.
Okay, so why don't we do that? And John, of course, will be the M C.
What day is it?
It's a Wednesday.
August 20th.
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
I don't think there's a planning meeting.
I hope it's not. Uh, yeah, okay, good. Alright, we'll get that rolling, the other item I had was I'm going to the organizational meeting for the B L M, I believe, Pat Berry Cooperative Fire District Discussion tomorrow afternoon and we'll report back to you as to, you know, what the work commitment looks like and the-
Then you're going to meet, yeah. Can you have a conversation with Rebecca about that, so she's up to speed?
Yep, I can.
I don't know, have you been following that? Not really, no, okay. Well, if you can make sure she's up to speed, so she-
Yes, I've got the documents from the chief and and we're, I know we're getting more organizational paperwork tomorrow that I'll get to you all.
That's good.
And just one last thing, I don't know what the board's thoughts are, but Mr. Benson has spent some time on the budget committee, has spent some time on the select board, that sort of thing. I don't know if anything the board would like to do to recognize his-
Yep, can we jump ahead again? Thanks on you. No, yes, I would concur, can we do something in terms of a little plaque too? Like we did for Katrin, kind of thing, in terms of recognizing his service? Because we should do it soon.
Yep, we should.
So if you can do something, Denise, you know what words to say. And then possibly Andy, maybe you can bring him around to it.
Yes, he's actually in care in, you know, locally, not very far away in Rochester, and I've been in contact with his family, so I would certainly set something up.
Well, just as soon as you can get that sort of, that would be great. Anything else, you jumping ahead, other things, are you adding to my list?
I will, not mix old business and new business, the one thing I would say is if the board needs a non-public, that's fine. I don't need a non-public anymore.
Okay, alright. I'll second. Consent agenda, I move to accept a consent agenda, is presented, do I have a second?
Second.
One discussion thing, is it possible, and I know they do the best they can, but every single year that I've been on this particular board, we always have during different parts of the year, these particular trailers, do you? Now, we have to give money back and we have to pay interest on that money we're giving back. So it's like it's costing us money, is there anything we can do so that this doesn't occur all this often? Because we've got, what, seven or eight of them?
I can certainly sit down with Mr. Marsh and see if we can come up with some way out.
Is there, so I would suspect it's more of, they don't tell us that they left and they say, oh, oh, we left six months ago. You can't-
I have spoken, I'm about tightening up on this.
Okay, because it's costing us money, it's not tons of money, but have they been doing this for a while?
Wow, it's been a long time.
Every, yeah, every single year.
You have to admit, this is pretty good, though.
Denise has been pretty aggressive with the, with the campground owners in particular about getting lists of who their actual tenants were, including, we had at least one person who said they were not going to give us that information and Denise did the legal work and called them up and threatened them appropriately and they decided they would.
Just in terms of saving the town some money, in terms of, because we have to pay, what is it, 8% interest on this money we have to give back? I think it's eight.
Yeah.
Which is, these days, that's a lot. If I had a camper, I'd sit it out there and make an 8% interest on my taxes, okay, and do it every single year and make all the money, so. But yeah.
Please.
Alright, alright, all those in favor? Unless there's more discussion, aye, motion passes. Our old business has been stolen from us.
So I've been stolen from?
New business, anything, Mr. John?
No, new business.
Okay, and you have nothing for a non-public?
I don't.
So you're signing stuff and then we should be back. Oh, this is all the campers.
We have only seven minutes to- two seconds of minutes.
So what's this little bug about the fire engine? Anything?
I have not had an update. He still has the same half dozen engines that he's looking at.
But have you had anybody come in and say, this is wonderful, or, why the heck do you want to do that?
No, we've had very little interaction. At the, at the onset, there was a fair amount, there was a local mechanical contractor who was interested in fixing the truck, but once he had actually met with fire chief, looked at the truck, reviewed the proper safety materials, that sort of thing, he was fine with it. I just have a few minutes.
Anything else, Mr. John?
Nope, I am good.
Move to adjourn, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.